There'll be some feedback, you know.
License before. Holy allegiance.
Holy allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Can we have a moment of silence? Mary Euner had a knee operation, so that's why she's not here. She had it last week. I think she'll be back next week. I'm not sure. Can we have a roll call?
Counsel Chamberlain?
Present.
Counsel Heising?
Here.
Counsel Schneider?
Here.
Counsel Stickley?
Here.
Counsel President Steeritz?
Yes.
Counsel Tiarina?
Here.
We have six members present on the board.
Approval of prior meeting minutes?
I'll make a motion.
Motion to approve the prior meeting minutes moved by Counsel Stickley and seconded by Counsel Heising. All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
I don't think there's anybody who wants to wish to address counsel. I feel like I'm back in second grade and I just won a contest and I'm a mayor for the day.
Or you lost.
Yeah.
Well, you can sail through the department heads pretty quick.
Yeah, department heads.
The only thing I want to bring up is I want to commend my water department staff and my public works guys. Last Friday night, we had a break on Burr Road, which was a very large break. We lost about four feet of water in the tower within two hours. So fortunately, we're able to find it. They worked throughout the night to get it taken care of and got the water restored in a timely manner. So I just kudos to those guys for all their hard work because they had a kick on the water plant in the middle of the night to keep us with water.
Do you think that's where the leak was before?
It's very possible, but it definitely, it wasn't freezing and thawing. It was the pipe that failed.
How big a pipe?
It's the pipe coming in from the city, 12-inch pipe.
Sort of like the monolithic, I looked at it, it split like three, four feet long.
About 2,000 gallons a minute we were losing. Goes quick.
Anything else?
That's it unless anybody has any questions.
Have you guys submitted for that grant or when's that deadline to the RFP?
It's already submitted, just waiting to hear back from the state.
Oh, okay.
It could be tomorrow, could be next year. You never can tell with grants on when they're going to get it back to us.
Okay.
Any other questions? Tom?
Not really much to report. I would just update counsel. We did have the Board of Zoning Appeal hearing last week and it was well attended by the folks in the neighborhood. There was good discussion on both sides. There were three representatives here for the owner of the property. They had a chance to present their position and then the city presented its and the folks were invited to speak if they were inclined to do so. I don't know, the meeting went maybe an hour, hour and a half, roughly?
Yeah.
Hour and a half. And the board voted four to zero unanimously to uphold the city's position and deny the appeal. So they have the ability to appeal that to the Court of Common Pleas. I think they have 30 days to do that. But it was a good hearing. Michael Christman did a great job as he always does.
I thought he did a really nice job.
Just being courteous and fair to everyone and making sure everyone had a chance to speak.
Is that a four-person board, Tom?
No, there's a fifth, but one of the fellows recused himself because he had sort of an interest in the whole outcome of the matter.
I was there and so was Harold and I, both of you two did a very nice job.
Thank you.
That's it?
That's it.
Okay.
Any questions?
Any questions? Committee reports, park board, Harold?
This is going to be kind of long. So you have two pictures in front of you. We'll start with Tom Vrenat, Mike Cohen, and Tom McWaters. That's the park board meeting on Tuesday morning. It was an extensive meeting. Keith Torbick was there. The one issue was talking about the grasslands that we voted on to be put in. Laura Camp and I think Yip DeCar and some others is going to be involved in putting this in. But Tom was there and so was the other ones and their main concern is because of the cross-country meets that are being held in Waseon and Homecoming Park. And you'll see the red line, the yellow lines, and the blue lines, which I wouldn't even go from the start to the finish if I went straight across myself. But anyhow, other people run a mile.
I run the blue.
So anyhow, where I marked an X right there is basically where we're talking about putting this grasslands, and I think they're talking about putting milkweed in there for the butterflies to come and some other items. So as you can see, the area that the council approved a few weeks ago, a month ago, to move forward on will not interfere with a cross-country meet at all. The other thing is, like Keith Torbick said, I don't know how wide they're going to be, but there is going to be paths through these areas. I don't know if they're going to be grass or what they're going to be, but the cross-country could run through the wildflower area also. So I think that basically, working with the park board, the people on the cross-country group, Laura Camp and the rest of them, I think it'll all work out very well. Do you see anything, Tom, or a problem?
No, I thought it was a good meeting and I know the cross-country guys appreciated the chance just to touch pace with everybody. And I think it was agreed that it looks like either what's intended in the first, at least at initial stage, would not impact the paths at all, or if it did, that there would be trails cut through to accommodate that. But it looks like the trails would be around that area. But we'll work with Laura. The guys will work with Laura, go back and forth just to make sure as it proceeds.
And that's what come out of it.
Yep.
Everyone in city and everyone in the park board and the group will work jointly to make this accomplished.
Yep.
So it works out best for everyone.
When there is a cross-country meet, I mean, I have attended cross-country meets and, you know, all of a sudden there are groups of spectators running from here to here to catch, you know, the kids at different points. Will that area being filled with, you know, brush or wildflowers or et cetera, will that hinder, you know, the, I mean, there's some extreme spectators that go from place to place to catch, you know, the runners. So they won't be using the path in that way, but they would use all the grassy areas. So I'm just wondering about that.
Yeah, that's a good question, actually. And I'm thinking that it wouldn't inhibit it too much, but maybe that's one thing that as that gets laid, maybe in terms of paths going through that, that would be a consideration, how to accommodate, you know, where the best viewing points would be that people would most likely to go. And if they're going to put in paths through that, maybe try to accommodate that. That's a really good question. I'm thinking, I'm trying to think back where most people would normally go in terms of watching the race. And typically, people would tend to convene at the pavilion a lot because you can see that the runners would traverse that twice during the race. And then there's the finish line. There's some people that actually go into the woods, like along the corridor, and coaches will do that, you know, to clock mile times and stuff. I don't remember people running back and forth across that area that much, but that'd be something definitely worth considering.
If the vegetation goes to the path, you know, there isn't room then for people to, obviously, you know what I'm saying?
Yeah.
To be along the path like they normally are, to be, you know, cheering and...
Yeah, that's a good point. And so I think that issue primarily would come about if you're looking at the box there with the X in it to the south of that, because I think the trail goes just north of, there's a little tree line there which is north of the path itself. And so the guys were interested in making sure there was enough room between the trees and the grassland so they could run. But you raise a good point. They also may want to think about making it a little extra bigger for fans to be there so they can get through. Yeah, something, that's a really good point, Sarah.
I used to run trust country about 200 pounds ago. But this course kind of looks fan-friendly, I mean, compared to some of the courses that we ran on. You might see the runners maybe want...
Well, I guess, I guess my thing is people may stay out of the woods because they would stay off the path, do you know what I mean? So that they're out of the place, out of the way of the runners. But they may try to be outside of the, you know, tree areas because then as the kids emerge, you know, you cheer and try to, you know, spur them on.
But they're, like that yellow part, they're not actually running on the path?
No, it's north of the path.
Yeah.
But there's actually, the path, the area immediately to the north of the path has got a slope to it so they can't run on that area. So it has to be a little further north. And there's a little tiny, like smaller trees there. So it's kind of got to be a little north of that. So that'll be a discussion we have with Laura, just, you know, I assume she'll want to map this out and let everybody take a look at it.
I think it'll all work out if everybody works together.
Yeah. Sure.
And I don't know how wide the paths through the flowers are going to be. Four foot, six foot? Who knows? I don't know.
Right now, right now, it's not even dependent upon that because the paths to run are not even cutting through it.
No, not at all. Not at all. I'm just saying that, you know, people would, for Sarah's benefit, there would be people able to go through the wildflower area on wide enough grass paths to catch up to some of the runners on the south side of the grass areas and where they all come down the, basically the south side of where the grass and the weed and the flowers are going to be.
Speaking from experience, cross-country parents can be kind of wild and crazy and I've seen them mow over or just run through stuff like that.
Well, that's what I'm...
Not the best idea, but...
I'm envisioning people running from this side to get to the other side for when their kid comes, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Back around, that's what they do.
People will have to put up some snow fence in certain areas so people don't go wandering through.
My son won't hear this being televised, but I never really had a hurry anywhere.
I was just glad we finished.
And you just had a... I was worried about finishing, that's all it was.
That's a concern and I think it was addressed pretty good. And everybody's going to work together to get it done properly. So that's that part. So moving forward, next for park board. There was a lot of discussion about the baseball fields at Biddle Park, which was kind of strange because when the tile decided to go in last fall, I thought everybody was on the same page, that they may not be good and ready 100% in the spring. Except now, in the middle of January, and then again in the middle of February, there's a major concern that the grass isn't growing. But anyhow, the grass isn't growing anywhere right now. Even old grass is not growing. It's going to be probably April before it gets moving. But they come up with, Larry Zimmerman at the park board came up with an idea. He took it to Rotary and they didn't like the idea of spending $7,600 to have Josh Sager come in and sow it so it grows immediately, which I don't know anybody that can grow grass immediately. I did go out at 4:00 today. Even the established grass on the diamonds has not started to come back yet. I didn't see any grass seed growing in the, where there was put tile. Did not see, the trenches are settling some, but had the meeting, Keith Torbick talked, John Arp said, we're going to, the city is going to make sure, if we can, to get those four diamonds up and running by baseball season. But in the past, everybody knew that the tile had to be put in. So... But I believe, and that's coming to council, and Keith can talk more materially, but I think the city can do the job as best as possible to get the four diamonds prepared, as well as the other four, before the season starts. And somewhere Hugo had said, and Matt said it's going to be six weeks, I do believe, and they're going to be ready for ball diamonds.
Wasn't there a concern too if, like, the tile is draining a lot of the water? And so we were having support from the school with their water sprayer thing?
Well, we brought in the school's portable waters sprinklers.
There we go, sprinklers, sprayer thing.
The sprayer thing we brought in so that we could water the fields because it was an abnormally dry fall and we know the grass didn't have a good opportunity to take. So what our plans are is in the spring is to go through, redress the soil and get a slip cedar and fertilize it and get it up and running as much as possible. Park board still was interested in looking at the possibility of having Mr. Sager come in and do that at an additional expense. And I asked Matt to go back to Mr. Sager and see what the bottom line was for that service. And I have not got anything back yet on that to take back to park board. But one way or another, we will be addressing it before the fields are ready to be played on.
The nice thing about our situation at Biddle is that we have some flexibility with eight fields. So we can shift some of our activity to the big four, right?
And that's why, that's why Shane, we only did the four because they didn't want to take the chance having all eight fields down at the same time. So we have the sprinkler, the irrigation system back up and running. We'll be able to utilize that in the spring and hoping to be able to get Matt and Hugo brought up speed on that because they've never utilized it before. So they are going to, it's going to be a learning curve for them to, on how to operate that to make sure that it gets done properly.
Maybe a time for, I think the product is Rain Bird, maybe? Maybe bring out something like that? Maybe bring somebody out from their company to walk with it?
If we can, that's my goal.
So anyhow, that's the Biddle Park baseball diamond situation. Moving forward, number three. Waseon Rotary has decided that they're not going to make new parks, but they're going to start maintaining and improving all the parks in the city of Waseon as the main thing that they're going to do for the city. They're going to start with North Park with the equipment. And this picture is some of the things that Waseon Rotary has came up with for different age groups to build, I guess. So they're going to start with North Park and the city's going to take out all the old playground equipment on North Park. Is that true? And then they're hiring a company, right, Larry Zimmerman, to come in and put all new equipment in. That's one. Two, they would like to, and I didn't make copies of it, so I apologize, but at Homecoming Park over by the pavilion, Rotary's idea is to put a playground by the pavilion also. So there's a little black spot on this picture. And the white thing is the pavilion. So they're going to put it close to that so people that rent the pavilion will have a place for their kids to play in besides going across where it is over there now in the Homecoming Park.
So this concept here that is a printout, this is just for North Park or one of these is for what they're hoping to put at Homecoming?
Probably both.
Oh, okay.
Will there be swings at both parks? I don't know.
In North Park, the swing set will stay. The playground equipment up top will be removed. I guess these are called pods. So there's a pod for a two to five and then a pod for a five to twelve. From what I understand from Rotary, they were looking at putting both of these pods up on top where the existing playground equipment is now. And possibly looking at that same concept in the other smaller parks. Obviously, Reard Park, we have Imagination Kingdom that, and this is what they're looking at. That's the same concept Imagination Kingdom has. They have a smaller set for two to five and then a larger one on the other side for five to twelve.
Are we planning, or are they planning on updating the stuff at the swing set, the mulch or whatever?
What, what we will do is the money that we've earmarked for improving here, we will utilize the same type of mulch and material that they use up top to do for the swing sets.
Nice.
Yes, it need, one way or another, there's going to be new mulch there. Even if this is delayed, we're still going to...
Upset that.
Yes, get new mulch.
And they was talking about rubberized mulch deal. And it's what...
Is it loose mulch or not?
It would be loose, like what the school has in their playgrounds. Sarah's Garden over there. Sarah's Garden, they have the rubber pad, but from what Billy Meyer and I believe Ed Nossinger, where they were talking with Sarah's Garden, they go, I think if we would do it over again, we would go with the rubberized mulch because it has a tendency, if it gets a hole, kids like to pick at holes and it has a larger maintenance. And once the water gets underneath it, then you have to almost start from scratch.
It says rubberized mulch here. And that's what Ed Nossair and Billy was talking about with Larry. And the cost is $72,000 is what the cost is for that.
Well, I live by that park and it's, there's always puddles underneath the, you know, swings. Or, I mean, it looks, it looks pretty sad right now with the, it's like the, you know, the landscaping layer underneath the sand is all kind of, you know, ripped up. So, and something that would last longer would be great. And that would look presentable.
So anyhow, Rotary, city, park board, everybody's going to be on the same page to work on the parks one at a time to improve with their residents. That's the theory. And I think that sums me up. Unless somebody else has got questions?
No question.
Unless Keith's got something he can add.
No, we just need a...
Recommendation. Yeah, recommendation to allow Laura Camp to oversee and make decisions regarding the native grass.
So if you need a motion, I'll make the motion to work with the park board and the Rotary to make this happen. You'll second that?
Well, we're...
We're, we're, we're onto this recommendation that's listed.
Laura Camp, we're going to have a recommendation.
Do that one first. All right, that's fine.
I'll move to allow Laura to oversee and make decisions.
I'll second that.
Recommendation to allow Laura Camp to oversee and make decisions regarding the native grassland project at Homecoming Park moved by Counsel Heising and seconded by Counsel President Steeritz. Any discussion? Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel President Steeritz?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Tiarina?
Yes.
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Six a's, zero n's, motion carries.
First reading, let resolution 2023-4, resolution authorizing the mayor to advertise for bids for street resurfacing, authorizing the mayor to accept the lowest bid and best bid, and authorizing the mayor to enter into contract with the lowest and best bid.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Motion to place resolution 2023-2 on first reading moved by Counsel Stickley and seconded by Counsel Tiarina. Any discussion? Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Tiarina?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Steeritz?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Six a's, zero n's, motion carries.
Ordinance 2023-1, ordinance increasing the pay scale for members of cons, council? Almost said congress. So you're watching and declaring an emergency.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
Um, this, just a question. This takes place in 2026, is that correct? Okay. It just sounds, when it's an emergency, it makes me feel like...
Well, we have to do it by a certain time.
Yeah, you have to do it within the month of February or before March 1st. So that's why it's an emergency, even though it doesn't go into effect until...
January 26th?
Yeah.
Counsel Tiarina?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Steeritz?
Yes.
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Six a's, zero n's, motion carries.
Final?
Second?
Motion to place ordinance 2023-1 on final reading and the final reading passed moved by Counsel Schneider and seconded by Counsel Chamberlain. Any discussion? Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Tiarina?
Yes.
Counsel President Steeritz?
Yes.
Six a's, zero n's, motion carries.
Ordinance 2023-2, ordinance increasing the pay scale for the mayor of the city of Waseon and declaring an emergency.
I will move on that.
I'll second.
And this is, this particular one is for 2024?
That's correct.
Okay.
And this also includes counsel president?
Uh, no, does not.
Okay.
So we didn't do that one?
Well, that, that starts in 2026.
Actually...
Was that part of it?
We shouldn't. I thought we were...
I thought it was part of the mayor's thing because we didn't know who it would be at the time of voting.
Oh, yeah.
Well, I think, so the president council's additional increase is on section 3 in 2023-1, but I did not, I see I did not indicate that that should be effective January 1st, 2024. So are we on the same page with that? So council's increase in salary should go into effect January 1st, 2026, but the increase of $1,500 beyond what council makes...
For council president?
Council president makes should go into effect January 1st, 2024.
And that was to be in 2023-1, right, Tom?
Yes. And so I guess...
We can go with that verbal amendment and then you'll follow up with something in writing, Tom?
Yes, I can, why don't I do that?
I'd make a motion to accept the 2023-... I'd make a motion to accept the 2023 dash one as amended by our law director.
I will second that.
I would, yeah, because we passed 2023 dash one.
Okay, Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Tiarena?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Stierz?
Yeah.
Six A zero N A's motion carries.
Do you think Tom would go ahead and follow up with, pass that amendment on emergency as well?
What's that?
Pass that amended portion on emergency as well, then?
Um, yeah, why don't we do that?
Yeah, I know.
Yeah.
I'd make a motion to, for final passage on that.
I will second that.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Tiarena?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Council President Stierz?
Yes.
I will, I'll revise that accordingly and make sure I get a copy to council tomorrow, so you can see the language.
Thank you.
My apologies for that, I'm sorry.
Did we do the other, um, did we do this one for the mayor or not?
Or dash, dash two?
Not. Uh, motion to place ordinance 2023 dash two on emergency reading moved by Counsel Heising and seconded by Counsel Tiarena. Any discussion? Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Tiarena?
Yes.
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Stierz?
Yes.
Six A zero N A's motion carries.
Final? Second?
Motion to place ordinance 2023 dash two on final reading, and the final reading be passed, moved by Counsel Schneider and seconded by Counsel Stickley. Any discussion? Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Tiarena?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel President Stierz?
Yes.
Six A zero N A's motion carries.
Uh, under second reading, resolution 2023 dash two, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an LPA federal local let project agreement for installation of a pedestrian hybrid beacon at the Wild Bash Cannonball Trail Crossing on Nurseup Avenue.
What'd you say? Can you repeat that?
I was out of breath.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second.
It's been a while since I was in cross-country. Stick to the yellow, of course.
Motion to place resolution 2023 dash two on second reading moved by Counsel Stickley and seconded by Counsel Tiarena. Any discussion?
I got one discussion. So is this gonna be a flashing sign that you push across, or is it gonna be a stoplight thing?
It's gonna be just like what's in Delta.
Likes in Delta?
Yep.
Because they do have one of them in 28 in West United, that's a pedestrian crossing, that push button, but it just flashes yellow.
No, this, this is gonna be an actual stoplight.
Just like Delta, so it's actually gonna stop traffic.
Yes.
Understand?
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Tiarena?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel President Stierz?
Yes.
Six A zero N A's motion carries.
Now, so under third, any new business?
I mean, I, I would like to, I guess, thank the Rotary for partnering with the city again to rehab our parks, I think that's something we can't take for granted, is to have a service group like that willing to work with the city, I think is a, is a very fine gesture on their part, so we appreciate that.
I agree.
So, so under the new business, since Shane brought, the Rotary would like to put a plaque out that say that they have done this in the parks, that they've put the swing sets and playgrounds up, and when they do that, that's what they would like to do. No, I don't think anybody has a problem with that, right?
I don't know what our regulation is.
No, I mean, we've done it in the past.
Okay.
As long as it's not like Waseon machine sign?
No, it's, no.
In full lights?
No, just a plaque. Anyway, old business, I do have something.
Okay, old business?
Old business. So the gala tasting of Waseon was Saturday night, well-attended, sold out, and I think everybody that attended had a good time. They did honor Mark Metheny quite well, which I thought was very good. Mark did a lot for the city of Waseon and passed away this year, so, but anyhow, that was just the old business. It was a good time.
Yeah, it was.
Food was good.
Excellent. Anything else?
None, it's all done.
Thanks, you're on.
Uh, approve all the bills.
I'll make that motion.
Second, let's pay the bills, right?
There you go, Harold. Chain of good.
No, I don't know.
Motion to approve and pay the bills as presented, moved by Counsel Schneider and seconded by Counsel Stickley. Any discussion? Counsel Schneider?
Yes.
Counsel Stickley?
Yes.
Counsel Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counsel Heising?
Yes.
Counsel Tiarena?
Yes.
Counsel President Stierz?
Yes.
Six A zero N A's motion carries.
So am I obituary when I die, I'm gonna put this, I was mayor for a day.
Heck, yeah. And we survived, you know?
It's so far.
So far, I know.
We have yet to adjourn.
All my fans showed up.
I know, look at all. Thank you. Don't turn the camera, just believe it. How we doing? A motion to adjourn.
I'll make that motion.
Nobody wants to go home.
I'll second.
My wife's cooking. I need to go believe Kathy's coming back.
Motion to adjourn moved by Counsel, any second by Counsel Heising, all in favor?
Hi.
Motion carries.